So I really never thought about it. But I got to see George, now I see Jim, so everything's good. Life is good.
Okay, our streaming's back up. It's now 6:01, but I will call the regular meeting of the county board supervisors to order. Please stand and join me in a pledge of thanks in a moment of silence.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call shows 20 of 21 supervisors present. Item four would be the approval of the agenda. I understand.
Last one make a motion.
Good minute, second.
Give you a motion in a second for approval of the agenda. Any discussion, questions? If not, then we will call the vote. Okay, the agenda is approved unanimously. Item five, members of the public wishing to be heard. There are none that have checked in or signed up. Okay. Item six is the consent agenda. Again, I will look for a motion to approve.
No more moves. Flynn, seconds.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions in any of the items? If not, then we will call the vote to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Item seven are reports. We have no county administrator report at the update at the moment. So item two is department reports. We have monthly statements of claim filed with a clerk.
There was one new claim filed since the last meeting, and if you have any questions on that, you can reach out to the corporation counsel.
And then Jackie, once more, will give an update on the county board supervisor election for 2026.
I know it's crazy to think about, but December 1st is only a few weeks away, and that's when you can start taking out your papers. And we do have the packets. I have some with tonight. You just can't start collecting signatures until December 1st. A couple other dates to remind you of, the spring election is scheduled for April 7th. If a primary is needed, that will be February 17th. And the other deadline, the signatures are due January 6th by 5:00 p.m. to our office. If you are planning to file a non-candidacy form, that is due no later than 5:00 p.m. on Friday, December 26th. And I'm going to ask that you not wait until Friday, December 26th at 5:00 p.m., because I would like to not be sitting here waiting for your forms. But if you are, we'll take care of that. And then just remember, if you don't file a non-candidacy and you are not going to run, we do have to extend the filing deadline by 72 hours for that seat. And I get angry about that because then it extends everything for us to start working on the election. I also have the non-candidacy forms here if anyone is interested in that.
Any questions for Jackie?
Did you say those two dates in the spring election and the primary?
Yep, the primary would be February 17th, and the spring election is April 7th.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you. Move on. In general, reports, we have WestCAP presentation by Tim Mather.
Everyone, this is Tim Mather and the executive director of West Central Wisconsin Community Action Agency Incorporated. Okay, all right. Thank you for having me tonight. I served on my county board, Dunn County, for two terms. So two things, I appreciate your service to your county, and second, I also appreciate short reports. Just a little history, WestCAP, like other CAP agencies, community action agencies, we were essentially adopted by counties. We were born out of the 1964 Economic Opportunity Act. President Johnson, you can see there, signed it. And there were activities that were a byproduct of the Economic Opportunity Act, programs that were designed and began, and your county, Chippewa County, adopted us in 1968 to administer those programs. WestCAP serves seven counties in Northwest Wisconsin, the red circle. There are 16 community action agencies across the state of Wisconsin. There are 1,000 community action agencies across the United States. We are all very similar, and we run similar programs, but we are all unique identities as far as an entity is concerned. So we can do unique programs and initiatives. What defines community action agencies is that we all receive community services block grant funding, CSBG. Been in the news among the things to be cut. We use a little bit of it. It makes up a very small percent of our overall agency budget. We receive about $380,000 a year of CSBG funding. It's a pretty flexible funding source for us. And in Chippewa County, we spent up at $380,000, $60,000 to support services in Chippewa County. Our leadership, what defines community action agencies besides receiving CSBG funding, is that we are made up, our board is made up of three representatives from each county. We have a low-income representative. We have a county board representative. So in our case here at Chippewa County, we've got Carrie Ives. And then we have a member of the community. So we have 21 people on our board for seven counties, and we have about 80 employees. You can see here, we serve seven counties. We also technically serve Burnett and Washburn, and now actually Ashland County for some of our programs. But in Chippewa County, you can see, we served 2,721 households. In total, we serve about 40,000 individuals a year. Our number one program, by volume, food access and resources, I'll get to that. Number two, energy assistance. And then number three, all things related to housing. Food access and resources, Chippewa County, we serve 2,491 individuals. Value of the services was around $274,000. The programs that we operate in Chippewa County are typically going to be funded by USDA. They are TFAP, which is the Emergency Food Assistance Program, and the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, which is CSFP. Those are literally boxes of foods that we deliver to elderly folks in your county. Housing services to Chippewa County, 241 households serve. Value of that service, $285,000. We provide housing stability services, so coaching for people that may need, like landlord mediation, and then other budgeting and things to help support people that are either housed and have their housing threatened, or are looking for housing. And then we operate homeless intervention programs. Those are HUD-funded programs, so that's rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, and tenant-based rental assistance. We also operate energy assistance in Chippewa County. That was a program that Chippewa County actually administered internally, and we took that over from Chippewa County about five years ago. We serve 4,351 households. Value of the services about $1.2 million, $1.3 million. And all those benefits are paid directly to local utility companies. For the most part, 99.9% of the money that WestCAP receives and is filtered through us and then is administered in the form of programs, 99.9% of that money goes to Main Street in Wisconsin in our service area. It does not go to clients directly. Clients receive ancillary benefits, but checks are cut to landlords, utility companies, contractors. For instance, we have Wors Gallo Plumbing and Heating out of Eau Claire. Been a longtime contractor in our programs, and they are recipient, direct recipient of the funding that we receive. Weatherization services, we weatherized or audited 232 homes in Chippewa County. By audited, I mean that we go out, we do diagnostic testing on the house and evaluate it for energy efficiency measures that we can install. Every house that we weatherize is a client that is on energy assistance. We don't go out in the open market and do this willy-nilly. We pick people off the energy assistance list with a high usage, whether it be high electric bill, high gas usage, and we go out and we do an energy audit to see if it makes sense for us to do anything for them. We also responded to 115 first responses to no heat. WestCAP receives phone calls in the middle of the night, on the weekends, from 10 counties right now. And for people that are experiencing a furnace failure or boiler failure, we dispatch our contractors that we have already established relationships with. For example, Wors Gallo out of Eau Claire here. And they're out at the house within 24 hours doing an assessment, trying to make a repair, and then they will go back if they need to do a more broad repair or replace the heating system. So that's a benefit to folks that are on energy assistance. Same thing with weatherization. We don't do that in the open market, maybe I mentioned that, but those folks are on energy assistance as well. So total value there, about $535,000 in your county. And the average energy savings for a house that we weatherize, and weatherization is not home improvement. It is nothing to do with finishes or, you know, things that you can really even see. We go into attics, air seal, try to stop airflow from, you know, the conditioned space in the house up into the attic or into a basement. Much of what we do is invisible when we're done. It's insulating attics. It might be replacing a heating system that's really inefficient. But on average, we save about $500 for the client moving forward every year. Tolls for Chippewa County, $2.898767, about $3 million in total value of the services that we provided to Chippewa County in 2024. We served a total of 5,912 individuals, 2,700 households. It's roughly about 10% of your population in Chippewa County. Shameless plug, we are having a big event, Mabel Tainer, 60 years, WestCAP. There are seats available. We've got Michael Perry, the author, from just north of here, is going to be doing some stuff for us on stage. We've got the Menominee Theater Guild and the Homegrown Tomatoes playing. Any questions?
What date?
Ah, great question. Friday night, 7 o'clock. Thank you for asking.
Any more?
It's actually our first fundraiser. I think in 60 years, we've never asked really to go out and try and create funds and do that. So this is our first crack at it.
Supervisor Gary.
Where does the funding to operate WestCAP directly come from?
Sure, great question. We have 100 funding sources to run our agency. So literally like 100 checkbooks. And the funding sources are, I would say, 80% federal. Those funding sources that come from the federal government, whether it's HUD, USDA, Department of Energy, they are typically filtered through the state of Wisconsin, and then they are doled out to grantees like us. The state of Wisconsin, for most of these funding sources, will lean on community action agencies, the whole network across the state, to administer the programs. The general sense or the general feel, the idea behind community action is that federal level, they don't really have their finger on the pulse of what's going on in communities where we do. And therefore, we can better administer services that people, low-income people need in our backyard than the federal government could. So typically, that's how the money flows. There are state grants, and then we do raise some money privately through donations.
Are you seeing any solvency issues for your organization?
Another great question. We have, we experienced a couple of nights or a couple of days early on, February, March, where, this is in the height of Doji. And we operate our agency on a reimbursement scenario. We go out and we do the activity, and then the government reimburses us the next month. In a typical month, our agency will generate about $1.5 million in debt out of our pocket. And then the next month, early in the month, we go and we get reimbursed. We log into portals to reimburse ourselves. And we had a little bit of a scare with HUD, logged in, and it was closed. We couldn't log in. And that lasted a couple of days, and cooler heads prevailed. They turned the switch back on, you know, we got reimbursed. So that was the closest thing that we've had so far to a scare for our agency from a cash flow standpoint. Right now, the effects of what's going on in the broader environment, how it affects our agency, is that example right there. And then also, the folks that are signing up for energy assistance are, they're enrolling, we're enrolling them, but they are not getting a benefit. So that benefit is not being, a check is not being cut by the state of Wisconsin, sent to the utility company. And that average benefit is like $300 for an average household. So typically, that check would get cut by the state and gets sent to the utility company for their gas or their electric. That has not happened yet. We're beyond the moratorium point right now, so people aren't getting cut off. But we get a lot of phone calls with questions. And then otherwise, SNAP, been in the news, we don't administer that, but it does affect the people that we serve. It further tightens our budget if they have to go out and buy food themselves. So those are the impacts right now. Thank you.
Supervisor Grithon.
Thank you. I know that some of the programs, especially like TFAP and T-BRA, and I don't know if you do T-BRA as well, but some of those don't have, my experience has been not sufficient administrative funds. So are you having to dip into CSG funds to help with the administrative costs?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great question. That's a direct answer. We operate pretty much everything we do at a little bit of a loss. You know, we are not raking it in, I can tell you that much. Like, we operate what we do because we have a mission, not because we're out to, you know, self-benefit. It's a great question. You know, and I will say one thing, if anyone, I tell this to everyone, whether it's my contractors or someone concerned about our programs and what they operate or how they operate, we, the programs that we operate are prescribed to us. You know, like, they come with a manual that's about an inch thick saying how to run the program. Our job is to administer the programs the way they want them, the way the federal or state government wants them operated, and we do a really good job of that. Whether you agree with who's getting what, it's a different conversation. You know, you would take that up with Congress from Tiffany or state rep. That's the place to take those conversations. We get them. And there, you know, can be a tough conversation to have sometimes, but we do what we do, and we're prescribed to do it, and I think we do a good job of it, so.
Supervisor Hennig.
Of this maintenance you do and things like that, you get a contractor, furnace fails, you get a contractor to come in and repair, fix, replace. Are these only for people who own homes, or are they for rentals too?
Yeah, so it's a great question. A lot of great questions tonight. So by and large, these are homeowners that are on energy assistance, low-income folks. That would be a benefit of being on energy assistance besides the potential to be weatherized. There are cases, so for example, if you got an up-down duplex in the city of, in Chippewa Falls here, and the person living in one unit is on energy assistance, and the furnace fails, we're going to evaluate whether we are going to do anything with that or not. And then the litmus test is if the property is owned and the other unit is occupied by somebody on energy assistance, then we will. Because the owner is also low-income and on energy assistance. So that is the litmus test for doing work on rental properties.
So both have to be on the system?
If we're going to change out a furnace or even look at it, yeah. Otherwise, if it's a, if it's a non-owner occupied rental property, then we're probably not going to do anything with it. It's the landlord's responsibility to provide heat.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Hey, any more questions?
I'll leave some cards if you have questions. Thank you very much.
We just thank you for being the valuable resource that you are to the community here. Thank you very much.
It's my privilege. Thank you.
On to business items. Business item one, resolution 36-25, resolution to approve the Chippewa County 2025 tax levy to be collected in 2026.
Resolution number 36-25, resolution to approve the Chippewa County 2025 tax levy to be collected in 2026. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors approves a levy against the taxable property in Chippewa County in the following amounts, and you can see that listed there, grand total, all taxes and charges, $22,330,263. And be it further resolved that per statute 59.18, the county administrators authorized to coordinate and direct all administrative and management functions of Chippewa County government as incorporated into the approved budget.
Take a motion to approve.
Later, so moves.
Good minute, second.
You have a motion on this. Any discussion? This should be what our discussion was last week when we had the budget.
Peter, just Supervisor Gary.
So I'm just concerned with this levy, and I voiced this in the past over other budgets. Does it give us enough of a cushion to operate when things go sour? Is there any cushion at all?
The cushion is not so much in the budget as that we maintain all of our fund balances. That's where our cushion is. If things go sour, we have to pull on those reserve funds to smooth that over effectively.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, if not, then we'll call the vote. The resolution is unanimously approved. Thank you. Item two, ordinance 8-25, ordinance to amend section 58-34, turn A regarding no parking zones. This is the second reading. Entertain a motion to approve.
Later, so moves. Omar, seconds.
Okay. You have a motion in a second on this. We've discussed this before at first reading. Is there any more discussion or questions? Chris is here to answer anything if you have further questions. Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Chair. Has your road study been done yet? Is it completed?
It's started, yes it has.
Has it been turned into, what is her name, Jen?
No, as I told you, they won't look at it if we're not going to make any changes.
Well, I've talked to her. She said she was going to look at that. Because we got to try to lower that speed limit, right?
I don't see where we have to try and lower the speed limit because you guys will see there's a problem.
All right, then, you're trying to set this up so we can eventually put a curb and gutter and everything else in there. That's what I think you're up to.
No, absolutely not. That's money that I don't think is well-spent.
You went off of two anonymous complaints, and here we are. And those, the sheriff also said that there was, those cars weren't even in violation, right? That is correct. So we're putting up no parking sites for no reason.
We're putting up no park, no, we're opening up.
Great.
Part of the no parking is some of what the business actually requested. They requested no parking in front of the two residents and in front of their business. That was something they requested. We're opening up that whole section that was no parking for us to like. So they're getting more parking than they had before. So actually, it's bettering them. The only no parking is going up vision corners, and that ambivalency is affected more by zoning anything else, because those are zone vision corners. So that's, the no parking goes up just at the corners, the side of the business and the residence, and then there's a small portion way up at the next intersection, up at O, a small piece in there that should not affect them at all, particularly since they've got all that parking opened up on the other side of them.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Hennig.
Just so that I'm clear on this, can you give me a number for how many parking spaces there were before, and how many parking spaces there will be after this ordinance?
I'll be honest with you, I don't have that with me. I don't know how many were there before. We had measured distance that, I did not bring that with me because I didn't think it was going to be relevant at this point. We opened up roughly 560 feet of parking. I want to say that's going to be 20, 25 spaces.
And we use that more spaces in your professional units than there were before?
Yes. Yes, mainly because the area, part of the area we're putting off with no parking in front of the house, in front of the business, they already had themselves put up no parking. They were keeping people out of those areas.
So the businesses and everybody else wins with extra parking?
Yep.
Okay. Supervisor Sedlitz.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm always fighting for the business and stuff, and I talked to the business owners, and they assured me that they're happy with this, very happy with this parking. So I'm willing to go with a yes on it because they said that they're happy with everything that was done on this end with how it sits, so.
Any more comments, any more questions? Thank you. If not, then we'll call the vote. For approval of ordinance 8-25. There you go. Okay. The ordinance is approved, vote of 19 to 1. Item three, ordinance 9-25, ordinance to amend section 58-31, parrot F, of the Chippewa County Code of Ordinances Regarding Speed Zones. Again, second reading. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Urgent motion to approve. Later, seconds.
You have a motion in a second. No questions? Okay. We will call the vote for ordinance 9-25. Our names are cloaked.
George.
Come on, George, you can do it.
The ordinance is approved unanimously, 20 to 0. Thank you. Item four, HR policy manual revisions for employee benefits, second reading. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Gary moves.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments? Tony's waiting to answer for you. If none, then we will call the vote.
You gotta wait, you gotta wait.
Thank you. Okay, the revisions are unanimously approved on a vote of 20 to 0. Thank you. Item five is the HIPAA policy revisions, second reading. Again, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Kelly, make that motion.
Lance will second.
You have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments on this one? All right, if none, then we will call the vote. So, the revisions are approved unanimously, 20 to 0. Thank you. There are no board chair appointments, we have county board administrator, county administrator appointment. And administrator appointment to the Health and Human Services Board. That's in front of you. Are there any questions or comments on that? If not, then we will call a vote for that. Oh, sorry.
Later moves to accept the appointment.
George, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Now, any questions? Looking at the clock. Yeah, it's not quite record, but it's pretty good. Okay, we will call the vote on this then. The appointment is approved unanimously. On item 11, agenda items for future consideration. On item 12.
Eric said he'll make a motion to adjourn.
Kelly, seconds.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, and the cape just saying aye. As opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
I'm just going to get you there at 11:30.
Because normally by the time we, the budget's just up and down, and if you don't have a patient, it's pretty quick. Proceed here for the budget, by the time it gets there.
None of the cities want to cook, they don't want, they don't eat much. They don't, they just want to eat. We had 20 people at my grandma's house, we all kind of cooked and it was all.